John Cox.
Here.
John Leo.
Here.
C.C. Johnson.
Yeah.
And Matt McGee.
Here.
Mike Turkus is absent, but we have a court.
Very good. Uh, minutes from the February third meeting? I didn't see any issues over.
I read through them, they look okay to me, so barring any other comments, they make a motion of approval.
Sorry, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, and the bill committee heard it clear?
After a couple of questions, the bill looks good?
Bills are good, I recommend we pay the bills.
Second?
Second, all in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, uh, citizens comment? Anything that's got on the agenda?
Uh, real quick, go.
Kyle.
Officer Matt Peter advised me that he's looking to retire, hopefully towards the first part of May. So, I spoke with Victor about it, and I'd like to post his position, um, the next week because according to Clea, I have to do a timeline. And when I looked at our past ones, if we posted with a timeframe, it would get him to start the first part of the new person, the first part of May. So, just, uh, in case you see a post, he'd come out, he'd say, "I didn't realize somebody was leaving," then he would be aware that somebody's leaving. So, he's, uh, turned fifty-five last year, he'll be fifty-six this year, and he wants to retire and move forward, and so Victor and I talked about it, and so we'd like to post it. Obviously, it'll be reduction in pay, it'll save a little bit of money, but, um, right now, jobs are hard to come by. Since I did a presentation for the leadership of Little Travers since the beginning of the year, there's sixty-three long-term jobs in the state of Michigan that had opened up. So, I'm a little bit worried about replacing them, but I've already got a couple of calls, so that's a positive thing, so the move is out, but just like, you know.
Now, you're, this isn't a surprise, you expected it?
Yeah, I expected, yes, yep, so he, uh, I didn't know, we still got some work to do on our end to make sure that it will be in May. I promise you, I will not hire somebody and, you know, overlock them on extended period of time, and so, but I also got a degree for the summer.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Kyle, is this an unfortunate setback from what happened with him earlier, or?
No, just he, he, I think he'd planned all along that when he got fifty-five, he was going to retire in that ballpark, and I think he, I don't know for sure if he's got cause of fire, but he's got the ability to do other things, he's
Good.
good builder, so I think he's got some other things that he could do, so I don't know exactly what he's gonna do, but he's ready to move forward. So, I don't think he's saying anything to do from the past.
Good, thank you. How long has he been out of the courts?
He'll be nineteen years, I believe, nineteen or twenty years, he started as a part-time, like, he actually has, he started years before, then he moved downstate. It would have put him over like twenty-two, twenty-three, he'd be the state the entire time, but he moved downstate and then came back out, so.
Moves a guy like that.
Yep.
Uh, anyone else for public comment? Watch twice.
I think this would be the time now.
Right now?
Yeah, 'cause you're not on the, you're not on the agenda.
Okay. Um, I need to, uh, do a job down on Glen Drive. Um, there's no way to get the material, we're removing trees over grounds and tree service, um, there's no way to get the brush and stuff out from where we're working. So, we would like to burn it down in front of the house, um, and I just need to hear from the show to do that. I've already, I talked to, uh, both chiefs, and they gave me, they said it was okay, but, um, and I'm gonna write a letter to, uh, the people that live close by, letting them know that we're gonna do this, if I'm allowed to do it.
Maybe we should hear their reactions to what you want to do prior to giving you permission.
So, Jim, Jim called me on, on Friday, we wanted to come to council, let me have, you know, a time period, tell me that the chiefs gave them a letter and looked it over and were okay with it. Um, so what you see, I just, I put, I printed out code for everyone, just for, for examples, the code, you're prohibited burning, um, on wildfires and can't, can't allow smoke to on other properties. So, basically, our code, I cannot approve this as city manager, so then I cannot approve, it has to be a council, a council decision, however, I think what she said, if, if, are you in a rush to do this?
Uh, we'd like to do while there's snow on the ground, we're not gonna be able to do it after the snow melts, of course, um, so.
Were you able to get anything from the homeowner yet?
No, I haven't, because I just, I, I, tough officer, man, we, we talked about it, and he said that, um, maybe we should, uh, send a letter to him. Um, and I, you know, mostly, he's been about live around here, you know, so it might be hard to reach some of them. Um, I know, I'll, I mean, I, it's not like I'm not gonna try, but, um, some of them, I may not be able to even get hold of. Um, I can probably get from the city, I can probably get numbers and stuff, like, I can look up stuff online, um, and find out, yeah, the numbers and things, and, uh, the whole, and, uh.
This is one of the, you can talk to, um, about our ordinance and stuff like that, 'cause we've worked really hard on putting this burned ordinance, you know, together here over the last few years. This happens to be one of the, we have a handful of places that are landlocked, the way they've built properties, neighbors, uh, and everything else. This is one of those situations that's, I don't know if it would necessarily open up Pandora's Box, so to speak, but it may prove that, you know, there might be a few others down the road that we'd have to look at. You know, accordingly, I don't personally see a problem with this, it, it's not big stuff, it's all undergrowth and things like that.
I was just gonna ask.
They need to be cleared up. Um, just for us. But it, it's, the, the way the house is positioned on the property, just around the corner, down the Packies, off its place, it sits on the ridge. So, then it's got a big swell that goes down the beach, so it's, it's a lot of, just basic brush, it's a lot of undergrowth and stuff like that, where they can just pile it up, you know, in the intermediate area of the property, not down on the beach, but in the intermediate property, it would probably burn for, uh, two days, maybe.
Uh, I mean, it's down, there's a swell down, I mean, it's a kind of valley down in there, um, so.
We, we have to do our diligence here, but personally, and I know Kyle's, we don't see an issue with it, but it's kind of, you know, I don't, I don't wanna open Pandora's Box, but I don't think we would run into that problem, so to speak, 'cause we don't allow big brush piles burning and stuff like that, and we pay attention to that. The only way to do this would be to do it like in the next month.
But you think the fire, it would be burning for a couple of days?
Depending on how, we'd let it burn, we'd, we'd let it burn down during the day, so it wouldn't be burning while we're gone. You know, there might be some poles or something, but we'll let it burn down.
See, I love tree companies here in the past month, uh, in the townships, um, they don't quite have the regulatory effects that we do here, uh, in the city. But what they've done is they go out and they're doing the same thing, they're on, because of the water levels and everything else, they're, they're clearing things, and they're leaving stuff all right there, and they burn while they're working. But it doesn't burn overnight, and so.
Okay.
Um, and I think that would be
Yeah, we would let it burn.
to Jim to do here as well, but we've been allowing that throughout the townships. Um, I get a phone call, they tell me the burns, we know there's smoke in the area, we know what's going on, turn up, goes with the issue. But I do think we need to reach out to the, if, if we do allow them, I mean, definitely gotta let the neighbors know what's going on.
Yeah, the neighbors should get out of there.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna type up a letter and, you know, send it to them, depending on what I was told.
So, nobody's living adjacent to it or close by?
I, I mean, honestly, I don't know if there's, I mean, they're just, uh, they're, some of people, there's no, like, if they, they don't live here, you're wrong.
So, Paul was probably being on the board, and he's in Packies old house, and he's, he comes to the Two or three doors past.
Yeah, yeah.
Far, far west.
And I don't know how far I should extend my.
I would say like five or six homes both ways, if we could, I just, that's, that would be my suggestion. And if you mail it to their address, whatever they're mailing, there's some there, they should have some type of forwarding address, that should get forwarded them.
Right.
And.
You can fi, I can find most of their addresses right on the internet, you know, where they live.
I have all their addresses in my system, if you provide a letter, we could put together a mailing and send it out, what might you like?
And then maybe, if we can get a response for our next meeting, and then, you know, plus it one way or the other, that we
I think that would be, I think that would be best.
Victor would have time to put, you know, reach out, you know, have two weeks, just say, "Can you please respond either to Victor or"
Next council meeting, March se, March second. That way, then, then we can also circulate your, so the council members can have your letter of approval to, you know, to council, so they actually
And if it's on the next agenda, it also, you know, everybody would know
Exactly.
what's gonna go on, which I think would be a good thing.
Yeah, we'll cover all this, and they'd still give you it out there, hopefully, it'll still be snow in March.
That's when it's, that's when it's gonna start snowing.
Yeah, yeah, like this. May I, Jim, provide these guys with those letters, so we got a copy?
Of what?
The letters that we signed.
Okay.
Bring down to, that's their kind of stuff, so.
And Jeff can, he can work with Jeff in our zone to get
Yeah, okay.
those addresses to the neighbors.
Typically, in other situations where we do a mailing, it's, it's all properties within three hundred feet, and just use that same methodology here?
Sure.
Cool. I'll bring the marshmen. I'll bring the marshmen.
All right, uh, no other citizens comment, we can move right into the city management section.
Great, um, so the first item on the agenda, item A, is Parks and Recreation Director Position Presentation. So, uh, Kirk Woodicker and I have been discussing this possibility for a while now, it's actually one of Nick's, Nick's ideas that I kind of ran with, was the idea that we have all these parks, we have all these people that are daring to, you know, participate in recreational programs and utilize the parks, and we really haven't been doing anything with them, very, very minimal. So, the idea here was to, um, explore the possibility of hiring a Parks and Rec Director, part-time, that would, you know, part-time, be roughly twenty-five, thirty hours a week is what we're looking at. But, um, they would essentially be managing our park system, um, managing all the staff, organizing recreational program, and doing a whole wide array of things that Parks and Rec, um, Directors should be doing. To kind of jumpstart our Parks and Recreation Program. So, um, so I did a little presentation here, um, about our parks and our existing conditions of our parks. Um, so the first thing I did, I went through some of our big parks, um, the, the major parks that we have in town, and within city limits, we have about a hundred and twenty-six acres of parks, recreation areas, and public green space, they're used for recreational purposes. Of these, forty-seven acres are city-owned, sixty-three acres are nature preserves, and seventeen acres belong to the school system. Got a little, little breakdown here of, um, each of our city, the main city parks, Zorn Beach, um, Josephine Ford Park, the waterfront, Zorn Beach, Zorn Park, Shade Park, et cetera. You see that, and what they're basically used for. Um, and the two that are, then so, there's two major preserves, um, the Nass-Maurer-Ronnickel and Leslie Nature Preserve, forty-nine acres, and the west, the Katoncee Nature Preserve, which is right just west of the Deer Park. I'm sorry, just east of the Deer Park. And then there's the school property, which constitutes its tennis courts, playground equipment, grassy areas. Uh, Councilmember Leo had asked, um, to see if we could visualize this on a, on a map, so I put, um, just, I just threw this together. This is the eastern half of town where all the eastern parks are at, so you got Coast of Quay Park and Skate Park up north, that's where you have your, the baseball fields and the skate park. Tours Park is this little park that overlooks the Ottawa Stadium. Ottawa Stadium, we play football, soccer games, here's a nature preserve right here, Deer Park, Ginger Dean Park, we got the dog, the meat and dog races, right here. Ford Park to the west, and then Shade across the street from that. Um, then I did the western, or central part of the town, we got the school pool up here on the bluff, and then down, we got the Marina Green Space, which I counted this little skinny narrow this little piece as well, and then Zorn Park, and then Zorn Beach. And we got the western half, that's the large nature preserve, this whole swath, all these different parcels you see here, it kind of goes off a little bit into, um, West Traverse Township as well. But this whole forest is essentially, um, the nature preserve, the conservancy owns that, and, or manages that, I should say. Then there's the northern half, we got the Kiwanis Park and Sled Hill up here, school tennis courts, some school fields right there, some practice field, and then some more school fields, green space, and playground, but everyone out there. So, those are the main
Thank you.
Yeah, those are the main, uh, I know, uh, Councilmember Leo said there's a couple other beaches, like Hidden Beach, and, um, that, we just, I didn't, I didn't really analyze here, but but there are, there are, basically, there are the green spaces, there are the public parks that, the public land, but these are the, the main ones. So, as you see, we have a, we have, for such a small city, we do have a wide variety of different types of, um, parks and recreation areas, from wooded areas to playgrounds to, um, you know, open, open grass and waterfront parks. So, I kind of worked a little bit with, um, staff here to go over our, um, some of the costs and revenues and some responsibilities of different department members, department heads for parks. So, basically, we got, I think, four or five main, um, parts of our parks. So, we got the lifeguards, we have fourteen part-time lifeguards in the summer, um, they're mostly high school students, um, we have one head lifeguard, and then Nick, City Clerk, is technically the head head lifeguard, 'cause he oversees everyone in the lifeguard
Frightening.
from his office.
Baywatch.
Yeah, right.
Um, they, their, their primary duties are, again, to do life, basic lifeguard duties, um, responsible for safety of visitors, but they also maintain and clean the bathrooms, what they're supposed to be doing. Um, Skate Park staff, we have about seven, eleven Skate Park staff, headed by a part-time Skate Park, Kiwanis Park Coordinator, his name is Nate. Basically, they, he reports to the city manager, and mostly, they, they do the Skate Park, but a little bit, they do a little work with the, the lifeguard, too, at Kiwanis. The DPW, they do a lot of parks, um, maintenance, essentially, clean mainly bathrooms, mowing the grass, plowing the parking lots, emptying trash, recycling receptacles, and fixing utilities, basic DPW duties. Harbor Master, they really don't do much for our parks, sometimes they do a little bit opening and closing the bathrooms, but they really focus on, on the, on the docks, however, they also, there's some park opportunities up there with green space, where they kind of control, so I included them just for that. Then we have the city hall administrative staff, you know, coordinating the rentals of the Kiwanis facility, collecting applications and monies for dinghy and kayaks, storages, grant research and application, budgeting, and Parks and Recreation planning. That dinghy kayak storage, they do get ren, we do get revenues for that, but that goes into Water, Waterfront Fund, and as an enterprise fund, so we don't this Parks and Recreation Position would be coming from the general fund, so I didn't include that in the financial analysis of, of this, covering of Parks and Rec Director. But Nick and I are still looking at that to see if it's a possibility to, to do that in the future, but we'll get back to that, I guess. So, basically, these are the costs to operate, uh, the beach, the sled hill at Kiwanis and the skate park. So, the total of two thousand and eighteen costs were thirty-eight thousand dollars for Zorn Beach, thirty, about thirty-two thousand dollars for the ice rink, and about thirty-three hundred dollars for the sled hill, um, sled, sled hill at Kiwanis Park. The surrounding townships, Little Traverse and West Traverse, do give us money, they contribute to the town, um, for maintaining those parks. So, we're, after we subtract their contributions, the city's actual cost is just about thirty thousand dollars for Zorn, Zorn Beach, twenty-two thousand dollars for the ice rink, and about two thousand dollars for the sled hill. As far as revenues, which we get, um, we get zero dollars for the beach, the sled hill brought in a hundred and six dollars and eighty cents, and the ice rink brought in about thirteen hundred dollars. So, as you can see, we do have a staff, we have, we have fourteen lifeguard, part-time lifeguards, we have eleven Skate Park staff, and we have the administrative staff, et cetera, and the only revenue we get is that, and that's because we have no, essentially, no programming. So, in January, I did a public, a survey of, of the community, an online survey, we got, asking them four questions. Uh, the frequency they visit and use our parks, what activities people engage in at our parks, uh, possible infrastructure improvements at our parks, and recreation programming that they would participate in. We received a good amount of responses, two hundred and fourteen, which is good for a city our size, and, um, I've attached those complete survey results, should have in the packet. The first question is, asked respondents to rank how often they frequent the several parks inside city limits, um, and we, I only focus on the city-owned parks, not the school parks or the nature preserves, because that's, these are the ones we control directly. The most frequented park was Zorn Beach, and the least frequented park was Ginger Dean, which is just out here. And you'll notice a trend here, the three most frequented parks are all along the waterfront, the, the three least frequented parks are all here near City Hall area. So, that's just an interesting observation that maybe do all our people use the waterfront, or maybe they don't know enough about what's here, maybe that gives us after, you know, some insight, maybe we can do more with the park name we have here, to get people to come and visit this area. But that's just a, a side thought, thought. Over eighty percent of respondents said they frequently visited Zorn Beach, which is, so eight, that's about over a hundred and sixty, I think, about. And, uh, eighty percent of respondents said they rarely or never visit Ginger Dean, so those are the both, on both sides of the spectrum there, of, um, frequented parks. The second question asked respondents how they use these parks, um, this was an idea, an idea of the activities our residents kind of engage in, which would then allow us to investigate why they're not partaking maybe in other activities. Um, so eighty-eight percent of respondents, you can see, walk at the parks, makes sense, swimming at the beaches, sledding at the hill, kayaking, canoeing, paddling. That's just a breakdown of what they, what they participate in. These ones with asterisks were ones that I did not include an option for them to pick from, but they wrote those ones in. So, picnicking, eating, dog walking, playing, and playground. Walking and swimming, of course, by far, it was two common activities. The third question asked, which amenities or infrastructure improvements they would want to see, what would let the city purchase or install? Um, about three-fourths of respondents answered this question, so about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty. Um, number one answer, you can, you can read through the whole list in prior, you have, but more nicer bathrooms and longer hours at the bathrooms, more benches and picnic tables, more playground equipment, dog park, a zigo-type band shell, and and for this one, a lot of people noted the, the green space at the waterfront, um, as an area for that. Splash pad, water park, which we are on the water, but that's a whole, whole different thing. And as you can see, you can run down the list, there's a lot of suggestions on what we can do. Um, some of them, you know, aren't that popular, maybe not feasible, but they are, people want to see, people want their baby safe grass, um, so. I don't know who that is.
I was just gonna say, what's the definition of baby safe grass?
I don't know. Probably. Probably. Probably.
So, there is no baby safe grass.
The fourth question asked what types of recreation, uh, activities people would participate at the city provider run. And we got some real winners here, such as, a lot of people want to do yoga, tennis, pickleball, paddleboarding, swimming, kayaking. There's, just a lot of different activities that people said they would be willing to participate in. Um, and this was a write-in, so I didn't give anyone choices, these last two questions, it was just, they wrote in what they would participate in. So, I'm sure these, there's probably more options, and people participated more than that, but this gives you a good, you know, idea of wildlife viewing, running marathons, community picnics, barreques, exercise classes, fishing competitions, people said, so. So, those, that's what the public says, that was the public opinion. So, I looked and, and looked at these, these survey responses, looked at our current, our current situation, um, and I do feel that if we had a Parks and Rec Director, we could do many things. First, we could provide that program for, for the residents, not just the residents here, but residents of the surrounding townships, as well as visitors that come here in the summer, um, and others. Uh, also, I think we could have a Parks and Recreation Director who'd be able to coordinate and work with the schools, um, the, the Little Traverse Conservancy, as well as other entities, private businesses, maybe the outfitter, whoever does recreation things to provide programming, and maybe better utilize the different assets and facilities that we have to provide for, um, the recreations of our constituents. I looked also at the master plan, which had several goals and objectives for our Parks and Recreation in Harbor Springs, and noticed that most of them were really not completed or not even started. So, I, I won't go through them all, but, you know, one was establish a capital program to augment, improve, and expand the city's public park recreation facilities, we haven't done that. Number, uh, letter C here, expand uses of Ottawa Stadium and enhance parking facilities to safely and efficiently accommodate additional vehicles. Well, we enhanced the parking facilities, parking lot, however, we've not expanded uses at Ottawa Stadium, it's still essentially just for high school, um, athletic games. You know, explore the possibility of a multi-use recreation area in place of the tennis courts down by the waterfront. We've removed the tennis courts, we've had slight conversations about what should go there, but we've had no serious attempt to actually figure out what we're gonna do with that green space. So, as you go down, as you've probably gone down through the goals, you notice most of them have gotten completely, but we do have, uh, goal D here, on the bottom page seven, create recreation programs that can be jointly sponsored by the city and residents, which may include, and this is from two thousand and fourteen, yoga, art, um, swimming instruction, aerobics, or other general fitness. We have, we have no recreation program, so we haven't started that. So, there's other goals and objectives, and you get the picture here, that a lot of the things that were expressed in the, in the public survey were talked about in this, the master plan. And a lot of these things, um, I believe can be executed by a Parks and Rec Director. Um, they can court, like I said, coordinate with, with staff, they can do some planning, they can, they can plan for what, what are, what we can use the space, the spaces for, whether we need they could perhaps create a ten, ten-year plan about, you know, the capital improvements we need to make, you know, this year, really, purchase some more play on equipment, this year, really, you know, do some chain, last day of our main, maintenance of this, this park. So, there's, there's a lot that a director could do in that respect. I've attached, um, also a job description for what a Parks and Rec Director could look like, but the central duties, as I mentioned earlier, would be to manage the parks, provide recreational programming, and oversee the park staff. Um, Andy had mentioned this to me earlier today, and I did include it in the, the job description, but also, he could, or he or she could apply for grants, and would be doing grant, grant writing, so that would potentially pay for his salary, and potentially, I'll pay for some improvements to, to a park, so that would be another duty for him to, to grant, to grant rate, and try to get some money for some of these improvements that we, that we need or want. I look at surrounding towns to see how you would pay for, uh, how, how to manage recreation programming and, and, you know, how you, how you, how you would pay for that. Um, our, our parks and size of our parks, the types of parks we have, are certainly different than Charlotte Boy and Potaskey, Charlotte Boy has a golf course, for example, we don't, we don't have that. Um, but there are, there are, if you look at what they do, they offer a variety of activities for a variety of people. So, Potaskey has kids camps, sailing, soccer, softball, tee ball leagues, tennis and lacrosse. Charlotte Boy has dodgeball, volleyball, hikes, ski lessons, flag football, and et cetera. Um, and some of these activities, they have other activities as well, these were the main, on the main calendar, these were up there, but some of these activities, they, they, um, charge for, some of them, they do for free. Um, for example, uh, City of Potaskey offers two-week tennis lessons that cost between thirty-five dollars and ninety-five dollars per individual, depending on your age. Um, they also charge non-residents additional fifteen dollars fees for programs. The City of Charlotte Boy charges a hundred and fifty dollars per team in their dodgeball league. So, there's a way that they can, you know, the idea, we're not trying to, you're not trying to make money off of the residents, we're trying to pay for the programming and, and the activities you're offering. So, we're not unreasonable fees by any means, but, you know, they do help sustain, instead of just being a taxpayer, sustained Parks and Rec Department, kind of user, sustained department. I believe that the cost associated with having a Parks and Recreation Director that oversees these programs and activities are far outweighed by the benefits of the city, even if we generate, generated little revenue. Um, on one hand, our residents will benefit from a variety of activities, will bring our community closer together and promote a healthy lifestyle. On the other hand, improved parks and more recreation program will keep more residents playing the city, and attract residents from outside the city limits. They are then more likely to eat dinner here, shop here, have ice cream, grab a coffee, order a beer, and run some errands. Right now, they're heading to other towns like Potaskey or other places to do their recreation program, so those other towns are benefiting from our residents or our surrounding township residents, um, from their business and their, their, their playtime, when we conduct their from that. C staff is recommending that we hire a year-round, part-time director, uh, depending on the success of our programming, the position would have potential to evolve into a full-time job. At this point, we're envisioning a, a work week of between twenty-five and thirty hours, and hourly rate of between twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, this could end, end up anywhere between twenty-six and thirty-nine thousand dollars annually. Uh, on a year-to-year basis, this could be partly offsetted by increased revenues. While we may see only a few thousand dollars in the revenues in the first year, as we start to set up our programs, we could see, expect anywhere between ten thousand and fifteen thousand dollars, or between a third and a half of that of a Parks and Rec Director's salary. And that's based on what other town, other cities and municipalities charge, um, for their, for their program. And if we get an extensive program, not, not quite at their level, but close to their level, we can at least generate ten thousand dollars on an annual basis in fees, user fees. If we get an extensive program, not quite at their level, but close to their level, we can at least generate ten thousand dollars on an annual basis in fees, user fees. So this, also another main thing, is having a parks and recreation director would allow staff, Nick manages the lifeguards technically. You know, we deal with Kulan's Park, we deal with a lot of other things. It would allow us to free us, free us up to do other things that we can be focused on in the office, as opposed to managing, you know, who's locked in the bathrooms, who's unlocking the bathrooms, who's maintaining the Kulan's facility, et cetera. So this would, you know, free up some time for us. I also look at our budget items, and we're probably gonna come under budget on a lot of items. This was, you know, the GE solutions, we already came under for a ten thousand dollars instead of twenty thousand dollars as we projected. And mind you, we projected very conservatively, and also because we just didn't know what we were gonna do at that point when we did our budget last year. So we just threw out some numbers that we felt were reasonable. Police body cameras, that might be going down, I don't quote me, but.
We went to the conference and we're hoping to get a lower bid.
Yeah, so that's, I'm just estimating, it could be seventy thousand, it could be eighty thousand, it could be less, but hoping to save money there. De-digitalization, we're not gonna do that this year, and if we do it, it might be, we can just do it throughout the months with benchmark or and or in-house to get those deeds. At least upload it to our system, and then we convert to a certain program, we can do that eventually. But post-female landscaping, after relooking at how much it actually costs, you know, probably cost some of those are fifteen thousand dollars to plant. And post-female landscaping was here long, M119, so add some trees, add some landscaping, kind of block the view of that color a little bit, or at least enhance it.
Southern.
Southern, I think that's the best word I'm looking for. Tree bases, this is the wild card one, that could still cost a hundred thousand dollars, but it all depends on where we go. It could cost thirty, forty thousand dollars, it could cost eighty, ninety thousand dollars, we just don't know on that one. So, but I still throw it up there because there's a, there's a chance it might not cost as much as we anticipate it costs. So, you know, we'll come anywhere for this year, potentially between fifty thousand and a hundred thousand dollars. Under what we predicted to be, we'll still be at a deficit based on a couple things, and that's legal fees for the court cases we have going on, the truck, the purchase here is close to purchased last year, that we purchased this year, and the equipment fund, what was that, the two hundred thousand dollar?
Oh, the last, earlier.
Yep, and a couple other things that will keep us in a deficit for the year. However, I don't anticipate it to be as large, this was early in the year. But, so going off of that, even for 2020, we'd be hiring someone probably in April or May. And really, so that would be a cost of fifteen thousand dollars, twenty-six thousand dollars, so really a minimal impact on our annual budget. And we'd have to adjust going forward our general fund budget, how we're gonna work with this to keep us in that, or at least in the plus side of things. But I think after talking with the clerk of the county, we feel like it's a minimal impact comparison to other issues that are straining our budget, which we'll probably end up talking about in a later council meeting. But right now, that's a minor thing. So what I'm ultimately recommending is that council create a new position at City Hall for a parks and recreation director, which responsibilities would correspond with this job. But I'm already prepared in anticipation, just in case you're surprised.
Keep preparing.
So an extensive list of things to do.
Personally, I thank you for all the work you did. I mean, thank you for putting all the work into this.
Thank you again, the presentation that you made, the request to make her so well researched, makes it really easy to analyze it. And I choose that it's huge upside potential for a position like this.
I ultimately think even if it's not gonna be, it's not, we're not in it for a moneymaker, we're in it to provide something for the community, to provide activities for the community. And if we can sustain part of the salary on revenue, then yes.
Oh, wow.
So I mean, if we're paying someone, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars a year to manage our park system, a more efficient park system, a nicer park system, a thriving system where you see people utilizing these assets, these open spaces, and you still generate ten, fifteen thousand dollars in that fees, we're really wanting to get fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars out of our general fund on a year, really a year basis. Potentially less, depending on how much we generate. So it can be a sustaining, and we could also eventually, and not say this is for sure, but reach out again to the townships to, once we can show them that we are doing more with our parks and more with our recreation program, but involve them in the conversation about potentially.
Services, higher value, higher fees. And it fits well within the other longer-term plans to make it a destination to attract more people. And I like the idea that it's year-round, there are things you can do in parks in one or two.
There are, and there's also, even if it's a little slower to winter, for example, right now, Andy's working on a pickleball grant. But really ideally, that would be, the parks and recreation director would be focusing on any grant writing that's related to our recreation.
Well, it's a park used to be a blast, you know, and was always busy up there, you know, with tow rope and doing a lot of things.
A lot of things that we could offer, you know, such as fun as parks, sled row, we think we hold that tremendously.
Skating rinks.
And we have an aging community, I mean, there's a lot of, but we don't really have anything to offer, you know, pickleball and stuff, something like that, that I think that we're missing a lot of.
Well, and there are elements in the master plan, which has been around for a while. And some of the, many of those same elements are showing up in a recent survey.
Yep.
So the desire to have that is still there.
Yeah.
So I'm very supportive.
Yeah, I think the community is excited to have, let's have more opportunities.
Yeah, based on the twenty fifteen resources we got, that was the evidence.
I want to make a motion to allow them to, no sort of employee.
How about second that?
Absolutely. You have a call or something like this?
I will. Matt McGarrett.
Yes.
CC Johnston.
Yes.
Matt Cox.
Yes.
John Leo.
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, thank you, Victor, that's a good job well done.
I really appreciate it, I think this is gonna be great, I mean, yeah, this is, Nick wants community gardens, but.
I would like to just know what we have for parks.
That's another thing, yeah.
Even this managing trash and helping with trash and organizing, the staff that we do have will be tremendous.
That is, yeah. Thank you, guys.
If you want garden, yes.
What are our work process on that?
I'm not gonna go to that one, yeah. All right, item B is the hardship, so these next three actually, B, C, and D, these are all assessing resolutions. I put little summaries for each of them, B, C, and D. And Jeff is here to explain them and answer any questions you have. But the first one is a hardship exemption and asset test resolution. Essentially, the state gives us, allows us to adopt guidelines, poverty guidelines established by the US Department of Health and Human Services and the Michigan State Tax Commission, and to allow the city to grant an applicant a poverty exemption for paying their property taxes. And you see what that says, the income shouldn't be greater than twenty percent in those guidelines. Traditionally, we have done a twenty percent exemption, say they should allow assets that exceed twenty percent of the amount of applicable federal poverty income guidelines. Mr. Grimm did some research and noted that most northern Michigan communities have a higher threshold. And so we're recommending increasing it from twenty percent to fifty percent. But Jeff can explain a little bit better than I can about this, it's important.
The hardship exemption exempts somebody from property taxes if they meet the requirements. There's two parts to that. One is an income level that's set by the state. And they kind of mandate that we have to have this exemption in place to some extent. We can't be more restrictive than they are, but we can be slightly less restrictive if we want. And we have in the past chosen to do that, both with our income level that we've set twenty percent higher than the federal standard. And to give you an idea, for a single individual living in a home, the federal standard is about twelve thousand six hundred dollars. So with our twenty percent increase, I think it's up to about fourteen or fifteen thousand. And then they also require an asset test, which basically if you would exceed whatever asset test we set, even if you met the income, basically they would be saying that you have assets that you could sell to pay your taxes. And like Victor said, twenty percent is what we've previously had on that. Twenty percent of twelve thousand dollars is a fairly small number. And when we looked at other communities, some were very high, some, like the city of Sault Ste. Marie, was at like four times what the PAC, or what the federal income guideline was. So that basically you could have fifty thousand dollars of assets, and I thought that was a bit high. Some of the other communities around us are closer to that fifty percent mark to a hundred percent mark of the federal standard. So I thought it would be a good idea to increase that up from four. Also, this is partly involved in, these three resolutions are resolutions that the state, excuse me, the state tax commission says we have to renew each year. So that's why we're looking at this again when we just left that last year. Any questions on the hardship exemption?
Does the property itself count as an asset, or is it assets exclusive of the property?
The state says that we cannot hold the homesteaded property against them as an asset. In the exemption, or in the asset test, we list that the homesteaded property would not be held against them. Also, we do not hold two, basically two automobiles for the home against them. Anything in addition to that could be considered an asset that they would need to report. On our application, you know, a thorough listing for any assets they might have, any holdings, things like that. And then the board of review goes through that list to see if they feel that they qualify or not.
On a case-by-case.
On a case-by-case basis, yes. And really, we, since I've been here, we had one year where we had two applicants that qualified. Usually, we have less than that. Some years, we've had none, some years, we've had one. This isn't something that is very frequent, and by changing that from twenty to fifty percent, we would not be opening up the door to greatly increase the number of people that.
That makes sense to me, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second to that. Resolution.
CC Johnston.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Matt McGarrett.
Yes.
John Leo.
Yes.
Thank you. The second resolution that Jeff has for you is a property transfer affidavit, fee waiver, exactly what it sounds like. It gives the city assessor the ability to waive collection of penalties for untimely filed property transfer affidavits, so long as they're not intentionally late or not the result of lawful neglect. So Jeff, do you want to explain anything beyond that? I think it's pretty simple.
It's pretty straightforward. The property transfer affidavit has a fee applicable if somebody doesn't file it timely. I think it's thirty-five dollars a day that we're supposed to charge them. Sometimes it just happens where, when a property transfers hands and the title company does their processing, it maybe takes six weeks instead of three or four to get to us. And in most cases, there's no need to go after somebody for a fee to collect that information. It still does provide us the opportunity that if somebody is purposely withholding that information, that we can still apply that fee, should we need to. But in my experience here at the city, we have not had that as an issue. The state tax commission again says that without this waiver, we have to charge the fee. And I really don't think that that is something that makes sense for us to be forced to do. We did this waiver last year as well.
Is it the same, same waiver as the last year?
Yes.
And it's after discretion of the assessor?
Yeah.
Again, makes sense, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second to that.
John Leo.
Yes.
Matt McGarrett.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
CC Johnston.
Yes.
Finally, the third, item D, the third resolution from our assessor is a resolution allowing a resident taxpayer to file his or her protest before the board of review by letter without having to appear personally in front of the board of review. Council's annually adopted this, and it eases the burden of the taxpayer and board of review. Jeff?
This is actually something that I was unaware of until this year. The General Property Tax Act requires you that if you are a resident within the community and you want to protest your property assessment, you have to protest in person. Only if you're a non-resident can you, do you have the ability to protest by mail. And the state tax commission again says that if we annually do this resolution, we can permit property owner or residents within the community to protest by mail as opposed to coming in in person. I think it makes sense, we have a lot of people that are seasonal residents here, they're here throughout the summer, they have their homestead here, but they take off for Florida or someplace in the wintertime, they're not back in March when we have the board of review. So it provides them an easier ability to protest their assessment, should they need to.
And what they would lose by doing it by mail is they wouldn't be present to have a discussion and present their case, it'd just be the letter.
True, and whatever information they submit with that letter. And we do, you know, we don't get very many petitions at the board of review. So we have time, even with people that maybe submit a letter stating, you know, something as simple as my value is too low or too high. We have.
Never gotten one of those.
I have, we have, we get one or two of those. When somebody has their property listed for sale and the assessment isn't high enough to justify that sale price, I get the call. But yeah, so we generally will take the time with those to review and see if there's, you know, what possible questions are.
Make a motion that we adopt the resolution, file by mail. One second.
John Leo.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
CC Johnston.
Yes.
And Matt McGarrett.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Item E is airport consent assignment of lease. So Harbor Hangars LLC has requested the area, Harbor Potaski area airport, to approve and allow them to establish a leasehold condominium project for three hangar units, then transfer that ownership to the new entity, Harbor Hangars Condom Unit. This is consistent with other leases approved by the airport authority and the city in the past. We've done this for, Mr. Rayner was, I guess, hired by the authority to work out the lease and the contract. And if you have any questions about any detail that you can, I'd even better see to answer those. I just had a brief walkthrough of the airport with Andy there, with Mr. Dome, Bill Dome, of Blue Travers Township, just to give us an idea of what was going on. Here's a letter from Mr. Dome, I included that in your packet. But essentially, you need, they need an authority to approve from all its constituent, all its members before they can grant authority to.
Are they just looking to build four hangars on the south side of the airport?
And the idea is, you know, that they, they kind of minimize them so that somebody actually owns a space within one of the buildings, but it's all subject to a lease, they don't really own anything.
Yeah, the airport owns the property, so they're just.
The city owns the airport, leases it to the airport authority, the airport authority then will subleases to these people that built the hangars. And it promotes the activity. So it's just an expansion of operations of the airport.
Exactly, yes.
Or a motion to approve and then leave? One second.
John Leo.
Yes.
CC Johnston.
Yes.
Matt McGarrett.
Yes.
John Cox.
Motion here. New record for oil calls, huh?
Yes. Item F, city hall sign location. The new city hall sign was erected last summer in place of the old city hall sign. The new sign, if you've noticed, is bigger, different color, but also bigger than the old one. Our DBW director, Louis Fernandez, pointed out that the sign's location and the size partly conceals those statues that were donated in 2003, 2004 by American Flag Pole. And it also interferes in the presentation and maintenance of the garden. He just threw that out as an observation, thought about, you know, should we relocate that sign? And I, you know, I don't know where to put it at this point, we really haven't looked at anything. I've come to the council just to see if that's something we think, you know, would be, we should do. Here's one view of it when you're on the sidewalk, you know, you can't see the statues in the back. Here's another view a little further out when we're, again, it's, you know.
I was asking to see if we can move it on the other side of the dirt, you found, that's basically right next to where you're taking the picture.
Yeah.
So it's, people coming down the road will be able to see it, it won't be right out, but it's ugly, but at least it'll be.
It could almost run north and south out there.
Not in the vision of the intersection, obviously.
No, but yeah.
Can use it to hide the, you know. Yeah. Well, maybe put a couple of little...
It's just sort of a dinner setting to give it a somewhat of an attractive look, but I would agree with getting it always from there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
So then what we'll do is we'll look at that location. We'll just bring a few different locations to you guys. Try to superimpose an image of the sign, or someone will just stand there and look at the sign. Anyway, yeah, then we'll come back. I just don't want to move it somewhere without some input from you guys.
I think if we were gonna just interject here, look at the landscaping, obviously, just drag around that area here. Maybe just kind of incorporate that in.
Exactly.
What is that game?
Yeah.
Any new drinking fountain?
That's what I want. I will ask.
Alright, thank you for that. We'll get back to you on that. And finally, the puppy bill ordinance, we approved this back in early January. And Mrs. Jamie Jenkins here provided the mayor here with us, and the ordinance she provided to me. I provided it back to the council and you guys discussed it and voted on it. Really, she's really thankful that you guys approved the ordinance and adopted it. But she still has concerns of loophole. That loophole is in this section here, that she claims is in this section, where it says, "Except as provided in subsection four, no person or business entity, including a pet shop, operating in the city shall offer per se to live animals or reptiles, including animals, dogs, cats, rabbits, or birds, unless operated in conjunction with a licensed animal protective shelter." Essentially, she says that this allows the pet shops to sell the animals as well as care and manage for them when she believes that should be in the hands of the shelter. Well, I did, you know, I went back and forth a little bit, talked to her about this a little bit, but I also did my own research here, a little analysis. And I think there's extremely, extremely low risk that a pet shop, or, sorry, I may rephrase that. Extremely low risk that a humane society or some sort of animal protection shelter would work with a pet shop to do anything but offer pets for adoption. It's just, I contacted the state's Department of Agriculture, which oversees licensing for animal protection shelters. And she has not heard of any cases where animal protection shelters actually sell their animals. But this is also one of those things where, you know, the term is what's misleading here is their definition for sale, as well as our definition for sale, includes adoption. So really, anytime you sell a pet or you offer for adoption, a pet for adoption, you're still charging a fee. Most of them are still charging a fee for that pet. So you're still exchanging money for the animal.
Which is a sale.
Which is really, for all intents and purposes, is a sale. There's, when I talked to the lady at the Michigan Department of Agriculture, she said that it's a really comprehensive process to get a license for animal protection shelter. There's 46 separate elements. It takes several months. There's several inspections. She said there's nothing barring an animal protection shelter for selling animals for a profit per se, but none of them do it. They're now a profit. There's really, she thought, like I said, there's really little difference in practical intent. Money's being exchanged. Also, the city's ordinance requires a pet store selling live animals contains license from the city as well as a state license. So I'd assume that if we were issuing a license, we would not issue a license to someone that we know is not working with a animal shelter. Most likely, animal shelters work with pet shops to, they'll use a pet shop floor to showcase their animals that are for adoption. That's usually how they operate. Again, is it possible that someone tries to skirt the system? You know, it's very, it's possible, but it's very, very unlikely. It's very unlikely that we know about it. So do I think, do I have anything against the suggestion for the... I mean, no, not really, but do I think it's worth it to go back and create a ordinance to adjust the language I don't think? So have Jeff given any additional thoughts?
You know, I looked at the, as you did, I looked at the state law for expect to animal control shelters and control over pet shops. And it's, they have regulations in place, and they are pretty dynamic and deep. So I think we've kind of taken it to the next level. I really don't think we're gonna have a problem. We have one shop here in town that sells pet food. We don't need a pet store in town. So I just don't think it's likely.
I agree.
So I just leave it to you, though? You guys mind?
I'd say we lose this.
I think what we have is adequate. I think, well...
Yeah.
Alright, really? That's just a little change. Let's go on the city manager report really quick. One thing I did not include in the city manager report was the Little League Parade is happening on May 2nd. It happens every year. Kyle, who did the staff look at that, the request, it's the same route. So I have some information I wish I had, but we already began this year. System software updates are coming this week, the next week potentially, for the, for our city system. So we're hoping by spring to launch our online business, but we can't guarantee that yet. We gotta see what happens. We never know if there's a kink in the system. We did remove two way fighting signs near the Moss Brook project, Gardner Street between Main and Bay. That's because we just wanted to make sure they didn't get damaged in the construction process. They alerted us to, hey, these signs might get damaged. So we'll put them back once the risk is minimized. We're still negotiating, working on negotiating the ferry license with the Little Traverse Bay Ferry Foundation. I think we're essentially done there, and you can expect us to come back to council in March to sign off on that ferry license. They do have to do a couple of smaller things for showing some location of their sign or shuttle drop off, but they should really... We're almost done there. And yes, a manager's meetings. I was interviewed by three different places for our niece, Pacey's problem. And also, I went and attended the Petoskey Chamber of Congress after the Little Traverse Ferry Foundation. Tim Matt couldn't go because he was... Yeah, out of operation. So that's really what I have.
Yep. Board of commissioners, I don't have anything tonight for that. New road business? One question on farmers market on Main Street. Do we approve that, or do they come to us to approve to have it on Main Street? They have.
And I think they should, I think they, just like any other event on public streets, they should come every year in front of council.
Because I'm new here. Why don't they have it in the park?
That's the...
Okay. We'll go ahead and talk about that. It'll take a while.
Okay.
Yeah, now they, Cindy Crager, the previous market master insists that the vendors don't want to be in the park. That they like the stable on the street to set up their tents. It would be a hardship for them to be in the grass. And the new market master drank the Kool-Aid, and it's the same opinion.
Did they try to have it down where the Old Times Court's were in Green State?
They suggested a couple of flat.
I just wondered, because in the summer, it's a, I mean, I go to, it's a traffic nightmare in the summer. I'm just thinking of some of these issues we're having with people and road improvements and things like that. Yeah, that would be a good spot to move it. Makes flat.
The other comment that I've heard from several people is to win.
Yeah, they're afraid of winning.
It'd be a problem. No, but I think real victory is... It's important enough and impactful. I mean, it attracts a lot of people at the time. But it does have an impact on the city. I think it should be discussed already. Things change, so it's a good topic.
Yeah, I think anytime we, any event is on a street or a park, that should always come to council or councils. And staff's review of the plans and council approval.
And it's changed a lot over the years. You know, now they have food there. Originally, they wouldn't allow food. They kind of snuck that in. So it's something we need to, or should look at before they get going this summer, probably reach out.
I received, when I first started, I received a lot of calls about the farmers market, essentially saying that, thinking that the city runs the farmers market, but obviously you don't run the farmers market. But we do have a say in whether, where the rules it has to follow and goes in.
We do authorize it, so...
I don't think it's a great thing, but I just...
Yeah, no, I'm not against it.
I've been to one in Petoskey, I've been to one in Charlotte, Lloyd. Yeah, I'd like to see it. It's a hand.
I think it should, too.
Yeah.
Let it grow.
Let it grow. I'll just question.
Yeah. Good question.
So they should schedule that, and we should have that discussion.
I don't know if the new market master is aware.
Before spring, let's hear and move on to the streets.
Oh, I was just gonna make a comment about having it in the street. Makes it easier for, I believe, for the vendors to load and unload for the farmers market. In Petoskey, they block off the street.
It's very common when we travel across country. We frequently see it for a couple days a week. They shut down a portion of downtown because that's where you want to attract the people, right?
So there, you want to pick a elected council member as acting mayor?
Yes. Yes, I will be here for the March 2nd meeting. So we need to volunteer or get someone out of the hat. John?
I'll be here for the first March meeting. I will not be here for the second.
You'd like to be the mayor for the first?
Well, I'm willing to be the mayor.
I won't be here.
You won't be?
No, that's fine. I'll look at my calendar. I won't be back from spring break.
I'm...
No, I'm gonna be here. Okay, I'm not wrong.
Would you like to be, would you like to be mayor?
I think yes.
This is John. Either John, so I won't be here.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'm glad it's you, but I thank you.
No, I do not. I have enough. I don't. Alright, so there's no objection. John will be the mayor. Mayor pro temp, I guess.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, one question. The canal underneath the road, which had some sinking issues. Do we have an update on that?
So that, Nick, if I'm mistaken, that's, they're gonna look at it again in the spring and then do the work.
After the thaw movement, see where we actually stand. I don't, the last I heard, depending on much of the swale, they were going to pour a cap over the whole thing. I don't know. That's outside my scale of engineering feats, but I'd say like there's a better alternative than a cap.
You pour a cap on something prone to moving, it's gonna move next time.
It needs to, right. Inside the tunnel, the floor.
A tunnel underneath him on 19? Section's approved.
It's essentially, and so Benchmark and Lucas have been on it, but I don't think they've came to a solution yet. They just only gonna, I heard the spring is only gonna relook at it and revisit it and then...
And that's too much to eject. Capri injections, where they drill holes and they, there's some, it's a new epoxy type material that can fill the voids, basically fills the voids and keeps things from settling. The company in Traverse City, you get down the southern part of the state, they do it up off of their lawn.
I just worry with all the work that was done to dig it out and fill it and compact it and whatnot, that it's moved.
But that's under their warranty, right?
But that's still even warranty wise, even if it's no cost to the city, we're back to closing the road.
Yeah, they have to go that route, absolutely.
I mean, we definitely need to hold Benchmark or Elmers or whoever, definitely help all that.
And worst case scenario, if the road does need to be closing and now we're back to timing.
Right.
That's the one to do it, so we don't need to back this either.
And it's also done, the next question, a future question is the bike path, when I get there, if we can do that, so... You know, if I'm getting a bike path, I'm gonna see if it's...
Well, Ron, were they gonna put stairs in it? I thought I heard there were stairs so you could walk from the north side, go down on the north side.
I didn't see that at the plant, so...
I think that was a bridge, bridge with, from where we're at now with water flow to incorporating the bike path steps and the walkway, so it's accessible. I think those planes are already kind of roughed out.
It was discussed, but not on the part of the...
But it wasn't ever, when we got it approved for this purpose, it wasn't for the purpose of a path, so yeah.
Yeah, we had to keep that as a separate thing so that it didn't influence the money that the state shifted in help of the project.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll be back with an update.
I was just curious.
Alright, if there's something else, I'll return.